Are you sure you typed it in right?
Alrighty, good evening everybody. I have a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion Mr. Scorola, seconded Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, four zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First and foremost, Mrs. Mammalito is not in attendance tonight. She had a family matter to attend to. She does send her regrets. That brings us up to our approval of our previous minutes for the meeting of September 23rd, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion Dr. Siddiqui, seconded Mrs. Weiss. All in favor, four zero. It's the best part of the agenda. Dr. Bossert, we are ready up to commendations.
Pardon me. It most definitely is the best part of the agenda this evening. And I thank the board for the opportunity to, this evening, to recognize some outstanding students, staff members, and volunteers that we have in our organization. I am extremely pleased with some of the things that we will have the opportunity to share with the board and community tonight. To do so, I would like to call, to assist in doing so, I would like to call upon our high school principal, Mrs. Brzezinski, to kick off our commendations.
She knows how to work a microphone. Excellent. Good evening, Dr. Bossert, District Administration, members of the Board of Education, and members of the Elwood community. I am delighted to share with you tonight that the first group of students here are being commended for their exceptional achievements on the PSAT, which, as you may know, also serves as a national merit qualifying test. To provide some context for the audience, approximately 1.5 million students take the PSAT. Two hundred and forty of our John Glenn students, 10th and 11th graders, took it Wednesday of this week, which was yesterday. The National Merit Scholarship selects students who earn the highest index scores, which are calculated by doubling the sum of reading, writing, language, and math test scores on this PSAT exam. Those students will then qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Out of the 1.5 million students who take the PSAT, approximately 34,000 earned distinction as commended students in the National Merit Qualifying Scholarship Program. We have three John Glenn students who have earned this achievement, and it is my pleasure to recognize them this evening. Trinity Housh, who has also been identified today as the class of 2022 Saludatorium. Congratulations Trinity. Will you join me at the podium? Congratulations also to Maya Tallo. You can join me at the podium, Maya. And congratulations to Isabella Ross. You can join me at the podium. I regret that Maya could not join us this night, this evening, but congratulations to these ladies on this well-deserved accomplishment. It is truly a testament of your hard work, and you are a source of pride for the John Glenn community. Congratulations, ladies.
I'm never happy with this background, so how would you like us to shift? Okay. Ladies? Is that fine?
Congratulations again. Additionally, out of the 1.5 million students who take the PSAT, approximately 16,000 are named as semifinalists. We have one John Glenn student who earned this impressive accomplishment, and it is my pleasure to recognize Anson Kwan, who has also just been recognized today as the class of 2022's valedictorian. Congratulations, Anson.
Are we okay?
It is also with great pride that I recognize four of our outstanding musicians this evening. These students have demonstrated a commitment to their love of music and have honed their practice to the highest level. As a result, we are here to congratulate again Anson Kwan and Tony Meyer, which I must correct on the board minutes, for being selected to participate in NISMA's All-State Mixed Chorus. Congratulations. We also have the privilege to honor and recognize Caitlin Shebel for being selected to participate as an alternate in NISMA's All-State Mixed Chorus. And lastly, Arum Lee, for being selected to participate as an alternate in NISMA's All-State Symphony Orchestra. And Aaron was not able to make it this evening, but congratulations to you all. We thank you also for being such a source of pride for the Elwood community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brzezinski. I'm quite certain we will hear from you again shortly, but before that, at our June meeting, we typically recognize members of our staff who are recently tenured, those celebrating 25th anniversaries, and those retiring and leaving our organization. On some occasions, we have some folks who retire a bit off schedule because it meets their personal schedule. And tonight, we honor a very valued member of our staff and our middle school family, Enrique Roman. And to say a few kind words, I call upon our director of facilities, Mr. John McDonald.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight I have the pleasure of recognizing, as Dr. Bossert has indicated, a member of our middle school custodial crew. And I wish to thank the Board of Education and the District Administration for the opportunity to recognize this member of our custodial crew. Enrique Roman started his career here back in 2009 as a substitute, as many of our custodial crew end up doing. And within a year, he was recommended and approved for the position of CW1 in the building. It was my great privilege in 2013 to recommend him for an upgrade to CW2 Night Lead here at the middle school. And it is from that position tonight that he will be retiring tomorrow. And it is with a great deal of pride and admiration and thanks that I extend to you, Enrique, for all your hard years of work here, your dedication, the even-handed way in which you supervise the men that worked under you. And with that in mind, on behalf of the Board of Education and the district, I wish you a wonderful, joyous, and all the best that comes in retirement. And with that, congratulations. Let me get this back on.
Enrique?
Thank you.
Congratulations. As he's walking back, Mr. Roman has been the face of the nighttime crew when the Board of Education used to go into the wee hours of the morning. And you were always there, making sure that we were safe, that the building was locked up, taken care of. You've kept our facilities, and the middle school in particular, in outstanding condition. And you will be sorely missed. Your smile, though with the mask we haven't been able to see the last couple of years, has always been something we look forward to when we left and embarked on the evening after long, long board meetings. So to echo Mr. McDonald's sentiments, please have a wonderful and enjoyable retirement. We will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy. The last group we have to recognize this evening, or we are pleased to recognize this evening, is the Board of Education. I said some words to the Board of Education prior to executive session that I feel the need to repeat publicly. For those members of our community that are present that are not aware, this is volunteer position. The members of the Board receive no compensation other than personal satisfaction in their efforts to try to give back to their community and guide our district in a way that they feel serves and meets the best interests of our students and community. And I can say without question that that has been the compass that has guided this district through some very turbulent times and in a very admirable way. This Board of Education is a dedicated group of professionals who always have the best interests of students in mind and will advocate in that capacity to make certain that the level of instruction and other opportunities we provide to our students is second to none in our region, in our county, and our state. It is my pleasure to work with them and for them, and it gives me great pleasure to recognize their efforts tonight. We have some new members of the Board who haven't had the opportunity to experience Board Recognition Week as we have done in some prior years, so I will inform you, that we typically rotate through the buildings and ask each of our buildings to work with the students of that building, to do some things to recognize Board Recognition Week as defined by the New York State School Boards Association, and we have some proclamations for them as well. I think that this particular Board drew the long straw when I called over to John Glenn High School and asked Mrs. Brzezinski to coordinate some efforts to help recognize the Board. To say they responded to that challenge would be an understatement, and it gives me great pleasure to reintroduce Mrs. Brzezinski to help recognize Board Recognition Week.
Thank you. When Dr. Bossert asked me to plan something for this evening, I sent out an email to the John Glenn faculty, and within minutes, I had an overwhelming response of faculty members asking, can we do this? Can we do that? Can we do this? And so at some point, I did have to say, okay, we have enough. So I hope it's enough. But on behalf of the faculty, staff, and students of John Glenn High School, we truly thank you for your volunteerism and your unrelenting support of the diverse and robust programs that we offer at John Glenn High School. So our first gift to you is presented by the Art Department. This "Thank You Board of Education" banner was created by the students in Mr. Marino's Periods 1, 3, 5, and 8 art classes. Each student signed their name on the leaves as a token of appreciation for your dedication to the vibrant art programs offered at John Glenn High School. So we thank our Art Department and the students who are taking those classes for this wonderful gift. I see my all-school president, Ali Hadad. I'm going to call upon her because I need some assistance. She just came from her soccer game. They played well, but they did not win. So our next gift, thank you, is delicious pumpkin bread prepared by Eileen Fuji's Third Period Food and Nutrition Class. Ms. Fuji and her students wanted to thank you for your support of the foods program and for their beautiful new classroom that would not be possible without your support of the bond. So we will now pass out some freshly baked pumpkin bread from our food students.
I will not be giving this to Mrs. Mammalito. I will not be giving this to Mrs. Momalena.
They hope you enjoy the pumpkin bread. The Technology Department wanted to express their appreciation of your support of their programs by presenting you with this next gift. These Legos are a representation of a project that Mr. McGuire assigns his students in production systems that enables them to apply many different tools and processes. To create these gifts for you, current and even former students work with Mr. McGuire to apply their knowledge of glue-ups, measurement, material layout, plan-reading, using a jointer, mitasor, bandsaw, router, lathe, sanders, and finishing. They hope that you enjoy these beautiful gifts and display them proudly.
Now, I have to be candid. There is a prototype Bossert Lego guy in the tech room, but they won't give it to me, and I think there's some kind of voodoo stuff that happens with that doll during class period. I'm not really sure. But it looks a lot like Mr. Scrolls, I have to admit. It's very, very similar, very similar.
Before I call up the last gift for you, I just want to say, in closing, thank you for all that you do to support all of the programs at John Glenn High School. The faculty, the students, the staff, the administration truly appreciate all that you do. And in closing, I would like to call upon our talented acapella wood under the direction of Mrs. Nagel to share their musical talent and appreciation of your support of the music programs offered at John Glenn High School.
All right, so to the high school, I feel bad for whatever school's on the rotation for next year to top that. But most importantly, you are a part of us. That song is very fitting because every decision that we make is for the students, it's for our community. And we are very fortunate to be elected by our community to sit here and serve in the role because we get to see the fruit of the labor of our teachers and our staff, and most importantly, yourselves, and to see the different areas tonight. The musics, the tech department, just goes to show that our community, our students, they get to embark and be a part of so many different things in our district. And we are so fortunate to be a part of that, to be behind some of the initiatives. We thank the community for your support in allowing us to serve this community. So thank you, everybody.
But that's not all, Mr. Tomio. And Ms. Nagel, thank you so much for bringing your students and sharing their talents with us this evening. Really, Ms. Brzezinski, everything you were able to put together, everything you were able to provide to remind the Board of why we do what we do, it was a wonderful representation of just the beauty that can come from our students and all of the wonders and joy that they provide to us every day to give the Board an opportunity to enjoy that. Ms. Nagel, I do have a certificate for you, for all of the Acapella Wood students. This is for you to hang in the chorus room in commemoration of your efforts tonight. Thank you so much. And it gives me great joy to look forward to having the opportunity to watch these students and our other talented musicians perform soon in a completely refurbished, completely redesigned, acoustically excellent auditorium that is currently under construction at John Glenn High School. These students will have an opportunity for a ribbon-cum-ceremony and some inaugural performances that we all very, very much look forward to. So Board members, it's very hard for me to follow that act, but... As the Elwood School Board participates... Oh, my God!
For the record, Mrs. Momalena just went bald.
We've decapitated Mrs. Momalena. That goes right back on. In recognition, certificate, this is a certificate of special congressional recognition to the Elwood Board of Education on the occasion of School Board Recognition Week. On behalf of the constituents of the 3rd Congressional District of New York, thank you to the Elwood Board of Education for your devotion to our students, the value and importance of learning impacts and strengthens our community. Best wishes for continued success in improving education for future generations. Signed, Congressman Tom Swasey. So that will be hung with pride in district office. And I also have for each of you a certificate from NISBA. I also have for each of you a small token of appreciation and gratitude, something that was purchased to sponsor and benefit the John Glenn PTSA that we thought you might enjoy on behalf of myself, Mary Lou, Lorraine, and Maureen. So let me just hand out those. And again, we can't thank you enough for your volunteerism and your dedicated service to our community.
All righty. Well, I know every board member up here does not like to be in the spotlight like this, so once again, we do thank everybody, but we want to get on to our business and the most important part, which is our students and our residents. So with that said, we're up to our student liaison report from Ms. Alexandra Hadad. Oh, yes. The board needs to take a picture, though, Dr. Bossert?
I'm not sure if we want to do that. Absolutely, Mrs. Momalena. It's up to you.
Okay, we can do it next meeting. Perfect. Thank you. We'll do one next meeting when we have the full board present. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight to provide an update from our Elwood schools. At Harley, 2nd grade clubs have begun meeting during recess and lunch. As always, classrooms are filled with bright colors, from students' artwork and from carpets added back into the classroom for small groups of students to enjoy. The 2nd grade students took their grade photo, and the whole school is looking forward to this month's Night of the Month Outdoor Pep Rally. EMS students had a fun time at their middle school social in the beginning of the month. It was great having all the students back together again, enjoying outdoor games, crafts, and spending time with their friends. Clubs are up and running, and middle school students are excitedly awaiting their in-school Halloween celebration coming up on the 29th. Up at John Glenn High School, September's Students of the Month were just announced. Congratulations to Dave Singh, Andrew Tartaglia, Madison Hughes, and Isabella Ross for showing excellent character as well as embodying the aspects of a model student. Progress reports are coming out on Friday, and students are reminded to seek extra help at AIS or through the World Language Honors Society students offering free tutoring. Ms. Lyndon Baum was just presented with the Nobel Knight Award, 9th and 10th graders just took their PSAT, and Natural Helper nominations just came in. All is running smoothly at the high school, and students are getting ready for Homecoming, Pep Rally, and Spirit Week coming up this following week. Speaking of Homecoming, we hope to see everyone there on October 23rd cheering on our Elwood Knights and enjoying Homecoming festivities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ali, and I'm sorry that you had to rush here from the game, and I'm sorry I didn't have the outcome we were looking for, but I always appreciate your update. And for the Board members, please recall that this coming weekend is Homecoming, and there are many portions of those events that we would love for the Board of Education and, of course, the community present to participate in. It should be a beautiful day. Hopefully, the weather that we've been enjoying the last few days holds through Homecoming for our John Glenn Knights.
Yes, it's next weekend.
Next weekend. Next weekend. Shall I...
Yes, Dr. Bossert, please, your superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief this evening because we spent far more time on accommodations than typical. I want to share with the Board and community, we received some late-breaking news today from the Governor's Office. It seems there's been a settlement to litigation that has been pending since 2014, which involves the funding of the Foundation Aid Formula. The Foundation Aid Formula has existed for some time, but many, many districts have not been funded adequately through state aid to represent their share of funding as represented by that formula. The Governor today spoke and settled that litigation by indicating a commitment to every district being fully funded in the area of state aid, foundation aid, foundation aid through the state over the next three years. Our district is close to being fully funded, so it won't impact Elwood as profoundly as it will some other districts in our area. But what we can feel confident about is every year, when it's time to see our state aid runs, we hope that we see at least what we saw in the current year, if not more. What this decision helps us to feel confident in is that, that in the coming year, our aid level will be at least what it was this year. We will hope for more. So while this is not grand news that allows us to start picking out the chandeliers, it is comfortable knowing that there is resolution to this long outstanding issue of how state aid has been delegated district by district. It's an effort to bring equity to New York. There are some districts that are funded at 30% and 40% of what the Foundation Aid Formula calls for. They'll see some corrective actions that I think will have a very positive impact on those districts here. Certainly not as profound, but it is welcomed news that there will be some more stable ways to predict the aid levels we will receive from the state. So I wanted to share that. The other piece is, I would be remiss if I didn't mention COVID every month. I yearn for a day where I do not, but I did want to provide the Board with an update regarding COVID cases. I looked back at our COVID tracker through October 1st, as today is the 14th, a two-week period of time. At Harley Avenue, during that two-week period of time, we have had zero confirmed cases of COVID-19. We had one at Boyd Intermediate, one at Elwood Middle School, and students, and two students at John Glenn High School, and one member of the faculty. The only concerning piece was alluded to in a correspondence that went home from Ms. Brzezinski to the community. The two cases at John Glenn High School are within the last two days. There have also been another number of students who were sent home from John Glenn High School symptomatic. Unfortunately, when we asked those students what they have in common, it was their attendance at a weekend social gathering, as communicated by the building principal to the parents of John Glenn. This is my plea to the community. We are doing everything we can do inside our school district to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, to follow the recommendations and regulations provided by the State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health. We would ask that parents help us to partner to do the same outside of school. We certainly understand that students will socialize. We certainly understand the need for socialization, and that students will have a tendency to get together and do things they enjoy outside of school. And some of that can be done very responsibly. And we ask students to continue to make good and healthy choices, and we ask parents to help them make good and healthy choices. When students congregate in very large groups in tight spaces, when there is even a singular case of COVID-19, we see the results inside school. This Board and the Administration has said from the very start of the school year, our priority is to keep children healthy and in school. Unfortunately, this week is the first real blip where we've seen one case leading to another, leading to another, due to socialization that took place outside of school. So it is a plea to parents to please help us to keep students healthy and in school. I thank parents who have acted out of abundance of caution, keeping children home when they're exhibiting symptoms, taking children for COVID tests if they are symptomatic. That has helped keep students in the classroom and learning. So we want to keep that focus in a positive direction. And as it says in the letter, "It takes a village to raise a child," and we thank everyone who is doing their part to keep everyone healthy and safe. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. And that would bring us up to our first residence remarks. Seeing no residents coming forward this evening, there will be another portion of the agenda later on for residence remarks. We will move on to... See if I talk slow enough, I get somebody up. I knew it.
Hi, Lisa Vitale.
Ms. Vitale, just give me one second. Sorry. I do have to read my blurb because you're going to speak. One second. Sorry. One second, sorry. The Board of Education encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda items should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board policy 1230. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputation, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. The past 19 months have been incredibly stressful and uncertain for all. However, there have been many unreasonable and detrimental requests made of the most vulnerable and precious members of our community, the children. As parents have tirelessly tried to advocate for their children, they have been stonewalled, mocked, and even intimidated. We have had enough. It is not okay to put fear in young children. It is not okay to tell them that they shouldn't breathe fresh air. It is not okay for parents to feel alone, unheard, or singled out. Science has shown that the seasonal flu is more dangerous to young children than SARS-CoV-2. If this is not your understanding, I ask that you share with us the data that says otherwise. Science has also shown that masking does not provide any benefit to children at school with regards to infection or transmission. If this is not your understanding, I ask that you share with us the data that says otherwise. Parents have a right to know that their voices are being heard and that unhealthy and harmful decisions and policies are being noted. In response to this need, elwoodguardian@gmail.com has been set up for parents to streamline these issues. All emails sent to this address will be handled with the utmost confidence. No parent or child should feel singled out, mistreated, or bullied under any circumstance. There are many good people in this community who have come together to help and protect other good people. Once again, for the parents that don't feel heard and need support, please reach out to elwoodguardian@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Good night, Mr. Roman, and once again, thank you. Enjoy retirement.
Good evening, Amy Kern. In the spring, you had advised that the district would be receiving the two federal grants, totaling approximately $4 million. I'm wondering whether you, the board, have seen the CDC Crisis Response Cooperative Agreement pursuant to which the grants were given?
Just say it again, Ms. Kern, I'm sorry.
Sure. Have you, the board, seen the CDC agreement pursuant to which the federal grants were awarded in the spring?
So we have. We've received all documentation from the CDC as far as any of the parameters pertaining to the grant monies and anything that has come forth, we have been privy to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's not the alarm.
So are you aware that the grant money is conditioned upon the district's compliance with both existing and unknown directives of the Department of Health and Human Services, including the expansion of government healthcare into our schools?
That is definitely something that our council has reviewed, and if there was any concerns, would have been brought to our attention.
Okay, because I think it's important to know what the directives may be. It was left very vague that it looks as though the department can tell you anything that they wish for you to implement as a condition of accepting those funds. Do you know how the funding is slated to be used at all to date?
To date, we had, in June, we did have a meeting that Dr. Hall was able to present the three-year plan as to what we would be using those funds for. It's a fluid document as far as what the needs are. We're assessing our students to make sure that those monies are being utilized to the areas that are needed most. If Dr. Hall or Dr. Bossert want to expand upon where the monies are being spent further, by all means, please jump in.
Sure, Ms. Tommy. There's a link on the website that explains both the source of the two grants that we received from the federal government, totaling $4 million, approximately $4 million over three years. There is an indication of how those funds would be expended currently and our plans for those funds over the next two years. It's on the website, and it is a presentation that was made at a public board meeting, which I believe you attended.
Yes.
And an update will be given to the Board of Education at the December meeting of how those programs are functioning and have function, and our plans, if any, that have deviated for those expenses moving forward. So I invite you and any community member who is curious about how our progress towards using those funds to benefit our students is going and our future vision for those funds to the December meeting, where the board will receive a thorough update.
Do you know, is there a way out of the agreement? Should the government require any directives that you are not comfortable with?
So my understanding, Dr. Bossert, correct me if I'm wrong, the funds are only utilized, so if we set forth that we want to use the funds for something, whatever it may be, we don't get the money. It's reimbursed to us when we want to do it. So if we're told that we have to do expectations A, B, C, and D in order to receive those funds, if that's something the Board of Education is not comfortable with, then that's something that we would just not go forward with and accept the grant monies. It's not that we're accepting the $4 million in its entirety in a check tomorrow.
Right.
It's as we need it, we lay the money out, they reimburse us. So if the parameters are changing, or there's something that they're putting a carrot in front of our nose for, say, I think that's what you're alluding at.
Yeah.
To make us do something, I think that's a conversation that the Board of Education, sorry, that is the time, but that would be something that the Board of Education would definitely discuss with council, and our superintendent would be advising us, I'm sure, as he has the entirety of this program, make sure that we're not doing something that would put us in a position for litigation or put us in a position where we wouldn't want to move forward for our students and our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that was your time, Ms. Kern. There was a second residence.
I don't think I spoke for three minutes. I spoke very little. I thought the clock was supposed to-
I did stop it when Dr. Bossert responded, and I just resumed it when you spoke.
I don't think I spoke for near three minutes. I asked two questions that were very brief.
Okay, I will yield you back one minute, because maybe the clock was still running while we were speaking, but it does say for three minutes. It's not three minutes of the resident speaking, a lot of time is three minutes. So if you're going to sit and ask questions to us and expect a response, that's part of your three minutes. Usually, residence remarks is a statement, not a question and answer, but by all means, this board has been accustomed to having this dialogue, so I'll yield back one minute for your three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had been very happy to see that there was an advocacy letter on the agenda this evening. I had submitted additional language to the Legislative Committee yesterday that I thought would help both our arguments. I understand that Mrs. Momalito has a personal matter to tend to, and I certainly hope everything is well, but I'm wondering, since we do have two legislative chairs, why the letter couldn't begin discussion tonight in light of the time sensitivity of these matters?
Given the absence of Mrs. Momalito and being somebody who co-authored or authored the letter and is a co-chair, the Legislative Committee felt that it was best that both chairpeople be representative when the conversation was brought forth of the letter. So in Mrs. Momalito's absence, we wanted to make sure that both participants were able to speak as to what the letter is and why they wrote it, so the conversation was of the full board.
Might it be possible to request an emergency meeting to address it, since the next board meeting isn't for four weeks, and that's pushing up to the 90-day limit, you know, limit of the initial mandate period?
That's something we've heard, and we can take it under advisement and bring it back to the full board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Kern. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Kim Vargas. I have two students in the district, one's in fourth grade, one's in sixth grade. I would just like to know, as far as you guys are saying that all the kids need to wear masks now when the vaccine mandate comes out, which is not legal because it's not in legislature, how are you guys going to proceed with that? Are you guys going to sign a paper becoming personally liable if anything happens to our kids that you guys, we are able to sue you guys? How is that going to proceed? And as far as masks too, are you guys going to be personally liable if anything, our kids get sick? How are we going to proceed with this? Because even the masks, they say they do not help. It's proven. It's medically proven. Do we have an answer here?
You or me? It's up to you.
Yeah, you can take it, Dr. Bossert. I mean, our interest is-
Mrs. Vargas, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Right now, the vaccine is not a mandate for public school children. As you know, the vaccine has not yet been approved for children under the age of 12. In conversations I've had with our governmental leaders and representatives of the New York State Department of Health, I don't anticipate there being a vaccine mandate in the near future, as the vaccine has not yet been approved. I may not feel the same way for staff, we'll see, but for students, I don't anticipate that mandate forthcoming. As far as personal liability, I'm sure you've heard this statement before, anyone can sue anyone for any reason. The district has a very large insurance provider that your tax dollars help to pay for, and we work with attorneys and counsel to make sure that the actions are consistent with best practice and what expectations are for a public school. During this period of a pandemic, the advice of every practicing attorney is to follow the mandates that have been put forward by the New York State Department of Health, and that is what this board and this administration has been charged to do and has done.
But it's not in the legislature. It's not in legister, so it's not legal, what they're doing.
Without getting-
It's mandated, but it's not legal.
Without getting too much of a back and forth, but I appreciate your passion. The attorneys have advised that a directive from the Department of Health mandate is equal to law in the governance of a school district. So in the eyes of the council that we employ to advise this board and this administration, not following the mandate would be a violation of the law.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas.
Good evening. Erin Abisher. I have three children within the district. I just wanted to ask, so you, Dr. Bossert, just stated that it has not been approved for children under five years of age, is that correct? The vaccine, or five years, under 12 years, sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Did you all see the TikTok video posted this evening by one of the members that was very excited about the fact that the vaccine is going to be approved for children five years and up? Did you guys see that?
We did not, but if we're going to be, please don't speak about a singular board member. If we have a concern about a singular board member-
I'm concerned about the entire board, quite honestly, at this point, and where you stand and how you are protecting our children. It is evident at this point that a majority of you share views that are not in the best interest of our children, and I personally, as a community member, am disgusted by it. And for those of you that do not back what the majority of the board is promoting, it's time to stand up and speak up.
Thank you, Ms. Abisher.
Hello, Christine Smith. I have two kids in the district. I want to follow up on what Mrs. Kern said with the Legislative Committee. When I was corresponding with both Dr. Bossert and the board back in early September, before we were even in school, I had correspondence with you, Mr. Tommyo, on September 7th, saying that when the Legislative Committee met, that you would welcome to hear the community's members, you know, voices would be heard at that time, and that Mrs. Momalito and Mrs. Weiss were trying to get a date on the calendar, and that when that happened, that would be, you know, shared with the community. However, it's been a month, and we still don't have a date, and we still don't have a meeting, and we send emails and we get like a fluff response back, and like our kids are suffering with the masks and with all of the nonsense, and we're still waiting for a meeting. It's a little bit ridiculous. I'd like to know what's going on with that. That's my first issue. My second issue is, I'm sure you all heard that the Department of Justice has now decided that concerned parents are domestic terrorists. I'd like to know what the board's position is on that, and I'd like the board to publicly state how they feel regarding that. Are you threatened when concerned parents come up here and try to speak about their concerns with their children? I think it's a little bit ridiculous that this is what the Department of Justice is doing, when you have parents that are concerned, tax-paying parents that are concerned about their children. And the final issue is, I would like to know what is happening with the lawsuit that the other districts, Massapequa and Locust Valley, are bringing. Locust Valley, who is represented by the same attorney as Elwood, so even though Dr. Bossert said, the attorney said, "You can't do it," they're doing it. I'd like to know what is the response there, because once again, your local power is being taken away. And if you're not going to advocate to have the local power back, what is the point of having a board, really?
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Sure.
To go through the, I'll go from the bottom up, if that's okay.
That's fine, I just didn't want to-
I don't have complete answers for all of you on everything. I can't give you answers for everything, but I'll give you what I can. As far as the lawsuit, Massapequa and Locust Valley, the Board of Education has inquired with our council that we retain Ingram and Smith, and they've advised us not to party ourselves to that lawsuit. That answers that question. As far as the domestic terrorist, as far as what the Attorney General does and what they have deemed as was a domestic terrorist, that's not coming from our Board of Education. Until further ado, we're here, we're open, we're having our public meeting, residence remarks are taking place, so.
That's fine. I would just like to know what the position is of all the board members.
So we can't poll the board on that. If you want to reach out to individual board members to speak to them, that's okay, but
Okay.
You can't poll the board and ask us our position on something at a microphone. But if you have, by all means, you do represent, we do represent you, if you'd like to reach out to anybody individually and have a conversation, I'm sure every board member here would have no problem to speak to you on a personal level about that if they'd like to.
Okay.
I would direct you in that. As far as Legislative Committee, the Legislative Committee, Mrs. Momalito is not here tonight, that's why that letter was taken off the agenda. It will be brought forth at the next meeting. We will, under Ms. Kern's suggestion, entertain or try to figure out if there is something for an emergency meeting because of the deadline, that's something that we'll be back and discussing.
I understand that. I understand it was taken off. My concern is the meeting. You know, we were told there's going to be a meeting, and it's over a month, you know, and like, why wasn't there a meeting to create that letter together? You know, like, that's my point, you know? Like, the letter, the email from you, and I believe Dr. Bossert sent me one as well, was you will have the opportunity to deal with the Legislative Committee. We will have a meeting, we're waiting for a date. And then there's a letter that's not being discussed because Momalito's not here, and I get it, but why wasn't there a meeting before the letter even was prepared? That's my point. The community should be involved.
I will, we heard you. We'll bring it back to Legislative Committee. One of the members are here tonight. Mrs. Momalito's not here tonight. Your concerns were heard. We'll bring it back to Legislative Committee. I can't give an answer to that because I'm not on that committee, but we heard you.
Okay.
And, you know, as far as a meeting, that letter would be brought forth here tonight for discussion, and there would be public input. So although there wasn't a specific meeting for that letter, there was and will be public input to residence remarks to have any concerns or comments made about that letter. So not that that constitutes an actual meeting of the Legislative Committee, but it is open meeting for all community members to discuss during the residence remarks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Tommyo, may I?
Yes, Dr. Bossert.
Just procedurally, for the Board of Education and the community president, I think it's important to understand that sending a letter doesn't require board action. There is no vote associated with penning a letter and sending it representing the board. This board has charged the Legislative Committee with taking actions that they feel are in the best interest of advocating for the district or the community. So if the board comes to consensus on a letter, it can be sent from the Legislative Committee or from the full board if consensus is gained at any time. There is no regulation or requirement to have a public meeting to discuss a letter. There is no requirement to hold a special meeting of the Board of Education for discussion of a letter. That is a function of the Legislative Committee. There have been many occasions during my tenure as superintendent where the board has charged the Legislative Committee with authoring a letter, sharing it with the board, receiving feedback, and sending it to the appropriate governing bodies or elected officials. This opportunity during public input does constitute the public meeting where the board receives information and feedback from the public on their position on matters that may impact the Legislative Committee's viewpoint in the letter. So I think it is fair to say the community has multiple opportunities to weigh in on the issues that we have discussed as far as mask mandates, vaccine requirements, and other health and safety items that were contained or will be contained in the letter that the Legislative Committee is drafting. So I'm not sure what opportunity it is that hasn't been provided, but I do understand that the Legislative Committee has been charged with and has drafted a letter for the board to continue to consider, and I understand the decision not to have an open conversation without the primary author of the letter present.
Mr. Fox, you have to introduce yourself, sorry.
Okay. Chris Fox, Elwood resident.
Chris Fox, Elwood resident. Mr. Tomio, you just mentioned that legal counsel told you that it's, for some reason, that the board will not be joining the lawsuit. Now, there are other districts who are moving forward anyway. Now, I understand that the legal counsel told, but what was the legal explanation for not joining the lawsuit?
Dr. Bossert, do you want to speak to what the legal guidance was on that? Thank you.
Absolutely. Firstly, I think it's important to note, and I don't want it to be overlooked, that there are 124 school districts on Long Island and 734 school districts in New York State, and two have signed on to the lawsuit. The Locust Valley School District, where the letter was born, did so against the advice of counsel. I would never, as the CEO of this district, advise the board to go against the advice of counsel. That's what we pay school attorneys to do, is provide their expertise. So the Locust Valley Board acting against the advice of their attorney, you would have to speak to the Locust Valley Board why they took that action. This board has been advised that since that lawsuit already exists and may or may not be heard in a courtroom, the outcome of that case will impact every school district in the state of New York. So whether it was brought forward by one school district or 734 school districts, the outcome will be the same. The number of districts that become a party to the suit will not affect the outcome. It's a constitutionality question. So it doesn't matter if the question has been raised by one person or 700 people, the judge, if a judge hears the case, the ruling will impact every district. So counsel has advised the board that there is no need to offer financial support for a lawsuit that they see that has very little chance of being heard, very little chance of being successful, that another school district is already fully funding. That's the answer from counsel.
So do nothing because it may not go anywhere? Is that basically the answer? Because to me, it's more about making a stand, and I would say that there's a number of parents in this would be happy if the school spent the money on it. So the question then becomes, we're doing nothing because they say it may not go anywhere. I'll give you a brief thing before I finish up. In the early 60s, the civil rights movement was deemed to go nowhere. And what happened? So I'm asking all of you to stand up and not just do nothing because it may not get anywhere. Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-up question regarding the letter that was removed from the agenda this evening. Just to clarify one thing, I understand Mrs. Mammalito is not here. Is this letter going to be on the agenda at the next meeting or at a special session if it's heard?
That is definitely the intent, 100%.
Okay.
It was to be on the agenda for the next meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Andre Bucknell, resident. I wanted to start out with a question, and I apologize, I was working until about 20 minutes ago, so I'm not sure if this had been, has been addressed already. First, I just wanted to ask, do you, do you guys as a board meet together sometimes when it's not in public session? Or are all of your meetings here, like, open to the public all the time?
So, interesting question, because the board does meet, but not in its entirety. So we do have subcommittees, so we have board representatives on those committees, so members of the Board of Education are present at those, but the full board is not. Do members meet for coffee outside?
Maybe sometimes two or three, or even four or five of you guys might meet, but not all six, those are public sessions, correct?
No, sir, that's not correct.
Okay.
The Board of Education, in its entirety, never meets when there's a, we would never constitute a quorum, which is more, three or more members of the Board of Education. If we do, it's a public meeting and we're here. The only other time that that would take place is an executive session, speaking of executive content that is not privy to our community.
Okay, I just, I missed the last meeting, but I watched much of it on YouTube, and I just, I don't, I guess part of me wants to say thank you to you guys for, because you seem to have an open, in that last meeting, I was at home, I was, I was doing some work, I was getting things ready, and I watched a lot of the meeting, and I guess part of me is glad that you guys were having the conversation in a way to, you know, it seemed like it was open and you guys were somewhat sincere about, you had that long conversation before the second round of resident remarks. I just wanted to let you know that the, again, it sounds like maybe you guys were just being sincere about trying to hash it out up here, but I will let you know, as for myself, and again, I was watching it on YouTube, and I know quite a few other residents who were here, and we spoke about it, and it really, you know, I just wanted to let you know, it seemed like it was almost as if, the perception was that you guys were stalling for time, hoping that some residents would leave before the second round of comments. And again, that is just the perception that I had and that other residents of Elwood have shared with me. I also wanted to speak to you guys about the masks, but I know that there's the three minutes, and I know I'm close to it, other people might want to speak, but I did just want to, you know, if there's any way that we can get involved in this, I, you know, I know I had a conversation with a friend of mine at work, and he was talking about, you know, Florida seems to have, I'm not sure what the proper terminology is, but they've banned the mask mandates, I think is the proper terminology, and he was saying how they're too reckless because they want everybody to take off the mask, and if I could just do a thought experiment with you guys, I talked to him and I said, you know, if it's a choice between having to wear a mask for the rest of my life and never having to wear a mask again, I would always take the latter, and I ask you guys to consider that as, you know, I know other people have already talked about possibly joining that lawsuit or getting the masks off. If I do, and I ran out of time.
Thank you, there is a second residents' remarks if you want to come back up, but we do appreciate, thank you. Any other residents' remarks? Seeing none, I'll close residents' remarks right now and move on to our consent agenda. Excuse me. Sorry, audit report, excuse me, presentations. I skipped over the, sorry, Ms. Dunkel.
I'm sure Ms. Dunkel would appreciate if you did that, actually.
No, we're not going to skip over because we had a glaring, beautiful, great audit report, so please, Ms. Dunkel, share with us.
I am very pleased to welcome our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Dunkel, to the microphone tonight to take the boarding community through an overview of the most recent audit report. And not to spoil the ending, but the business office is functioning at a very high level. Our internal auditors, our external auditors have focused on our controls, our systems, and our practices, and given us very, very high marks. And to take us through their findings and recommendations, Ms. Dunkel.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert, and good evening to the board and to the community members. So just a brief overview, as Dr. Bossert mentioned, we have both internal and external auditors that review our financials and all of the operating key controls in the business office as oversight to make sure that everything is being handled properly and that the money is being spent as it should be. The purpose of my presentation tonight is just to review the external audit for the year-end and to review the financial fund balance status of the school district as of the close of the school year of 2021. So this year, the district received an unmodified opinion on our financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the highest opinion you could receive, and that shows that there were no material weaknesses in the district's internal controls. And to that, I'd like to thank my staff for their hard work and dedication, and it truly is a team effort, and I appreciate all of their hard work and dedication. As far as our financial rating, we've maintained our Moody's rating of AA3, which helps us when we go out to borrow money for both the bond and our annual tax anticipation notices. At the end of this school year, the general funds, unassigned fund balance at the year-end was roughly 2.6 million, which is at the recommended cap of 4%. Some of you may remember, at the close of the 2020 school year, we exceeded the cap, I believe it was roughly 4.6% in anticipation of the unknown expenditures that were related to COVID. So we were written up from our auditors at that point, and one of the recommendations was to reduce the fund balance back to 4%, which is what we were able to accomplish for June 30th. The only finding in the external audit had to do with our extra classroom accounts, and I just wanted to note that the extra classroom activity accounts relates to all of our clubs, all of the advisor clubs that are handled by most of our staff members. It's a function that is outside of the business office, but we do work closely with the extra classroom treasurers to make sure that they're handling all of the money's property, because a lot of the money, you know, comes in from the parents and the students themselves, but under New York State law, the business office is not permitted to have control over those accounts, but it is something that is on our actual financial statements. So one of the finding, one of the finding that we were cited for had to do with outstanding checks. They were dated more than six months and had not been voided. Typically, our policy is to void all checks after six months if they have not been cashed, but one of our extra classroom activity accounts, and I will say partially it was due to COVID, we had to issue many refunds to some of the parents over the summer and of the previous school year, and some of those checks had not been cashed. So the corrective action plan to fix that, we did void all of those outstanding checks. We worked with the treasurer to make sure that that was accomplished, and to ensure it doesn't happen again. As I mentioned, the business office works closely with the treasurers of both the high school and the middle school, so the proper procedures are being followed. We also, we also have annual training for all of the class advisors, so they know how to handle those monies, and we make sure that the treasurers are issued the safeguarding, accounting, and auditing activity funds booklet each year. So that's to help prevent other issues from happening. And in previous years, we typically had three or four sightings on the extra classroom funds, and this year it was reduced to one, so kudos to the classroom treasurers for improving on their abilities as well. Moving on to fund balance, during the course of the year, typically at the budget presentations and throughout the year, we provide updates to the community and the board on our actual fund balance, and the district's total fund equity from 2020 to 2021 was increased from year to year, I believe, let me just, my notes, sorry. The overall increase in our, in our overall fund equity, I should say, was roughly 1.6 million from 2020 to 2021. Much of this was due to decrease in expenditures due to COVID-19, as we know, we weren't spending as much money as we had in previous years, and we also had an increase in revenue due to some GEAR and ESAR funds, which are two other, they're not grants, but they were money that the district applied for under the CARES Act. So this is just a snapshot of the overall fund equity for the school districts. I will do my best to explain, let me just make sure this is, okay, let me see if I can make this larger. Okay, I cannot, oh, we actually, let me see. Yeah, Morgan, there we go, oh, sorry. So just to review the different reserve funds for both the board and the community, try to do this year by year so everyone has an understanding. This first reserve is employee benefits and accrued liability. That essentially is money that we hold in reserve for staff members for when they retire from the school district. Almost all of our bargaining units have a clause in it that when staff members retire, that they're entitled to a certain percentage of sick payment for their unused days. So that's what the first reserve is for, and we use that year after year when we have unplanned retirements, we can pull money from that reserve to cover those expenditures and take, instead of taking it out of the actual operating budget. The next two reserves are both for retirement, the employees' retirement system, which covers our non-certified staff members, and the teachers' retirement system, which covers our certified staff members, which are mostly teachers and administrators. These funds, again, are used to help offset, or to help, I would say, supplement the revenue each year in the school budget, and again, that helps us reduce, I would say, the amount of money that we would be looking for as far as the tax levy is concerned. So these, these dollar amounts are monitored by our auditors as well, and there are limits under the New York State guidelines, you're only allowed to put in so much money overall, and the TRS, the second, the second retirement reserve was just implemented two years ago, so we're just trying to build up a little bit of that money, so we have it, as we do anticipate the teachers' retirement contributions increasing in the next year or two. So again, that would help offset some of the, it would supplement the revenue that we build towards the budget year by year. Restricted for capital, a few years ago, there was a community approval to establish a capital reserve, and you can put no more than $500,000 in, in each year. This year, it's roughly over $500,000 because the $1,978 has to do with interest that accrued on that account. Last year, we weren't able to put any money in, so this year, we had additional monies we were able to fund back into the reserves. Our reserve for debt service has to do with our bond monies. On occasion, we receive a premium when we borrow money, and that money must be used to pay back debt in the future, that's the only purpose it is allowed to be used for, and the only additional earnings on that this year, again, $62, that has to do with interest. I could say the same thing for our reserve for unemployment. There were no additional monies added for that, and that reserve, again, is used in case we have a major influx of unemployment. We were able to use that reserve during the previous school year, as we had, we were being hit with a lot of unemployment claims due to COVID, not specifically for our full-time staff members, but for many of our part-time members. And the last two line items on this slide are assigned appropriated fund balance, the 1.5 million, that again, that's a supplement to our, the revenue side of the budget. We allocate $1.5 million of the reserve to, I would say, fill in the gap for the revenue side of the budget. If we did not have that $1.5 million allocated, and we have it in this year's budget, we would either have to had, cut $1.5 million from the budget, or tax another $1.5 million. So each school district, most school districts have an assigned appropriated fund balance. In previous years, we were trying to reduce that number. A few years ago, we had it down to 1.25 million, but due to COVID, we were able to increase it two years ago, and it stayed flat again for this year. The assigned unappropriated, that really is just a reserve for encumbrances that represents our outstanding purchase orders as of June 30th for items that may have been ordered late in the spring and we had not received, so we roll over those purchase, roll over the purchase orders as they will still be paid in the upcoming school year. And our unassigned fund balance is at 4% I was referencing earlier. Last year, it was 2.9 million, and again, that was roughly 4.6%, so this year, we reduced that down to the recommended percentage of 4%. And our total equity from 2020 was roughly 9.4 million, this year, it's 11 point, it's roughly $11 million with an overall increase to the school district's total equity of $1.6 million. So it does, we are going in the right direction. It is helpful to be able to fund some of these reserves, because it are, it is something we do rely on during the budget season. Some of you may remember, in addition to the 1.5 million of appropriated fund balance, we typically allocate roughly $800,000, $800,000 of these reserves from the retirement system to help supplement the revenue as well. So it is important to have this money in our reserves. And that concludes my presentation for the evening. Anyone have any questions?
I just want to comment, this was my first year on the Audit Committee. Mr. Tomio and I were in the Audit Committee, so we sat and went through in a detailed analysis with both auditors, and they were extremely happy with Elwood. They do a lot of different school districts, and some of them are in bad times. They said that our finances were great, that everyone in the staff handed over documents in a timely fashion, that you were great to work with, you and your team, so I want to thank you for working with the auditor so closely. They just had nothing but nice things to say about where we are financially for Elwood, considering what we've been through. So I was happy to sit on this committee, and I'm happy that we had such a clean bill of health. So, I was happy to sit on this committee, and I'm happy that we had such a clean bill of health, and I know that you will keep it up. And I thank you for reporting on all of this, and please, thank your staff for, I know it's a lot of work providing all the financial statements, but I just want to say thank you, and I learned a lot sitting on the committee, and I look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, I will let Steph know, appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Scorola, Ms. Weiss.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is my first year not on the audit, I kind of miss it. But I had a question, on the restricted for capital reserve, you said that you went over the $500,000 by the 1978, which is, I guess, the interest?
Yes.
To, number one, did we get penalized for that? And number two, and forgive me if I missed, if you said it and I missed it. And number two, is there any way to take that interest and maybe do an intra-fund and move it to someplace else so that we don't go over? I guess number two is based on your answer to number one.
Right, so, no, to answer the question to number one, no, we're not penalized. We're, the district's not allowed to allocate, meaning we can't take more than $500,000 of our funds and put it in the capital reserve, meaning, you know, we can't put in $500,000. When we allocate interest, that's specifically on that money, like, in the bank account, if you want to call it that. Like, capital monies are completely restricted, so they're in a separate bank account. So, any interest that's earned on that has to go to the capital reserve. But we're not penalized for it, it's not, we're not allocating more than $500,000, but the total increase for the year includes the interest.
So, if our interest had been $10,000, it would still be the same? It's kind of like two separate things, just in the same account?
Correct, we just, like I said, we can't, like I, you know, as administration and with the board's approval, we can't allocate more than $500,000 a year.
Okay, and so, I just was curious if that had, you know, if you get penalized and that affects your rating, which, again, of course, we got a phenomenal rating, as we always have. So, thank your staff for that, I really appreciate all the good work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Anything? No, so I'll just echo the sentiments, the district wasn't always in the best place. We were deemed susceptible, and we were in a tough spot not too many years ago, and the business office, under the leadership of Ms. Lachlan and now yourself, definitely have worked well with our internal, external auditors to make sure that they are the correct controls in place to mitigate any of these susceptible risks that we were accustomed to seeing. So, definitely, the auditors, both internal and external, gave us a great report. Couple, few suggestions on things that were either out of our control or things that we can implement controls on. So, I look forward to seeing those controls and continuing to see these great audit reports because the financial health of this district is very, very important. Without that, we've seen in times that programs are on the chopping block, that positions of our teachers and staff are on the chopping block. So, it's imperative that our financial forecast continues on the trajectory in which we've been accustomed to seeing the last few years. So, I know the Board of Education supports the business office, and we look forward, sort of forward, to the budget that's upcoming before us. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I mean, as, you know, it's a good point you brought up, Ms. Tomio. Just a few years ago, and as we just discussed, our total fund equity increased by roughly $1.6 million. And I believe it was about three or four years ago, our total fund equity actually decreased by over $300,000. So, we have, we are definitely going in the right direction.
Thank you, and extend our compliments and thanks to the staff and the business office as well.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to-
Thank you.
Thank you. Moves us up to the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, Mrs. Scorola, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, 4-0. That should bring us up to our next residents' remarks. Okay, that brings us up to our second residents' remarks. All right, seeing no second residents' remarks this evening, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Scorola, all in favor, 4-0. Thank you, board, and thank you to the community for coming out this evening. And thank you for the combinations, and most importantly, thank you to the students and staff.
Thank you to the Board of Education.